Evening, everyone. The May 2025 Brookhaven Borough Council Meeting will now be called the Order to Kindly Join Us in Rising Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of April 2025, Michael Aba, Dominic Aiello, and the unborn child of Hallie Heller and grandchild of Terry and Sherri Heller. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Present.
Ms. Fulvio.
Present.
I know Mrs. Heller is here. She just stepped out. Mr. Deplicki.
Here.
Ms. Sewicki.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilworth.
Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Havick.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Smol. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I have my report for May. This will be my final report of the school year as I have another school event at our next Borough Council meeting. If I asked the kids, they would all pour us the number of days that we have left. I think it might be 27, but I could be incorrect, and they would definitely correct me. We finished the PSSAs this past week. That is the Pennsylvania Department of Ed's assessment that is required of students in grades three to five for ELA in math and science. Our students gave their best effort, which is all we ask of them. Students were randomly chosen for showing effort from each class that was assessed each day. The winner was given the advantage of coming downstairs to the office and playing the old Price is Right Plinko game and winning a $5 gift card. It was quite a hit. Even the teachers got him loved. Girls on the Run, a big congratulation goes out to our students in grades three through five. Our Girls on the Run team competed for their final season 5K on Saturday, May 5th. We are so proud of our hard work and perseverance. In April, our kindergarteners brought joy and laughter with their joke day. Currently, our first graders are preparing for their public speaking opportunity called Teddy Talk, which will be shared and recorded in May. We have many engaging grade level experiences happening right now on the academic front. Second grade is learning about embryology through hands-on science activities with hatching chicks. Third grade is building their public speaking skills through their upcoming Live in History Museum presentations. Fourth grade is diving into entrepreneurship with Classroom City. And fifth grade continues their deep dive research and presentations with projects on individual countries. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. Our PTL has created the wicked theme through the school with different treats each day to celebrate our teachers and staff. If you have the opportunity, check out Facebook and Instagram. It's quite an adventure this week. Also, we have our course concert and art show Tuesday evening, followed by our band concert on Thursday evening. Additionally, this month is action-packed with engaging and fun school activities for our children such as Garden Fest, Field Day, and a Philadelphia Union Assembly. We will finish the month with Memorial Day weekend and a time to remember and honor those who served our country. In June, we are looking forward to an author visit, third and fifth grade awards ceremony, kindergarten moving up celebration, fifth grade moving up celebration, a BMX assembly, Celebration Day, our Sun Valley Senior Clubout, and of course, the last day of school, which is June 13th. Thank you and have a wonderful and safe summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then open the first public discussion session. I ask that everyone that has any questions regarding the closure and Taylor. Clo- clo- closure? Closure? Sorry, that's hard to say. Hold them to the second public discussion session. We will have some details. We don't have a finalized plan. We are feverishly working on that. So kindly hold any comments or questions until the second. Good evening, sir.
Peter Masiere, this is Marshall Redd. I'd like to know if our school district, Pendelco, is installing school bus safety arm violation systems?
Mm-hmm.
I was caught in one of these in Rose Tree Media, and I looked at the violation online. I can't tell where the school bus was facing, and I never saw it. I'm contesting it, but I was wondering if our district is doing it and what the police involvement is. I read the law, all nine pages, and the police department has to certify that the buses are properly operational and such. I don't know, is Pendelco doing this?
Chief Havick, sir.
Yeah, so just last month, we entered a mutual agreement with the school district along with the other police departments in the district, Parkside and Assam as well. Pendelco does have plans to install the stop-noar violations, cameras on their buses. They're not on them just yet, as they were waiting for all the agencies involved to sign the agreements. I suspect that probably within the next four years, one will be up and operational. We had a conversation with the school district about a trial period where warnings may go out, and a public relations campaign before it goes live, hopefully before people get caught in the dark net. But speaking with that, the police department reviews every violation that occurs. You have to log in and view the violation, confirm that the tag that was captured is accurate, as captured by the camera, and that the violation occurred. You basically just certify yesterday that there was a violation, and then a civil penalty is issued to the armed. But I don't, other than the many great details, I don't know if they're not actively doing it just yet. Just speaking with other agencies that are in the program, Upper Rochester Police Department, and all the, they're the ones I spoke to about how they manage it within their agency. And that's pretty much their norm, just to certify that it's a violation that they did pass when the tag was current. This is a violation.
Well, I mean, I've never done it before. I've never overtaken a bus, and I was really shocked to have received the violation. I don't remember even ever seeing it. It might have been on a cross street on a four-lane highway in front of Rose Tree Park. So I don't know how I'm going to determine which way the bus was facing. I can't tell from the first, like, three little videos and three stills. So I'm waiting for my hearing date.
The civil monetary penalty that would be assessed would not come with an assessment of points against your driver's license unless you are a chronic repeat offender. And then there is a procedure for an assessment of points against the driver's license. And of course, if you accumulate so many points, there's a risk of having the driver's license suspended. Or an assessment of points on one's driver's license may also result in an increased premium in one's car insurance rates, right? As the risk of the offender increases, so does oftentimes the car insurance rates.
Yeah, this violation, alleged violation notice did say no points, no insurance rating, you know, just fine $300.
Exactly.
And the police department gets 25 of it. The school bus safety grant program gets 25, and $250 goes to the school district.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I was, I didn't know about it.
There are multiple school districts in Delaware County that are in the process of implementing this program, and I suspect within the next year or two, most if not all of the school districts in Delaware County will be implementing a similar program. Again, the ultimate, I guess, goal is obviously for the safety of our children that are on those buses.
Out of curiosity, how close were you to the bus?
I don't remember seeing it. It was the intersection that goes into Rose Tree Park from, like, there's a condo development.
I, yeah.
And I think that's.
Park Place?
Yeah, I think it was facing the park, but I can't tell. You know, my car clearly see it, a bunch of other cars.
I'll avoid driving during school hours.
Yeah, one thing to remember is, even no matter how wide the road is, like, 252 is a five-lane road with a center turn lane. Even if you're in all the way to right lane, the buses come from all the way on the other side.
Oh, I, I know the rules. I just, I know the rules. And just, I was very disappointed to have received this violation.
Obviously unintentional, and I wish you the best.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice, we have one more. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Okay.
Good to see you again, sir, and good evening.
Good evening. Mind if I turn this around?
Absolutely, however you're comfortable.
Paul Pedrick of Brookhaven Glen, 400 Harmon Way, Unit 422. I'd like to refer you guys back to the March meeting in minutes or video. And during that time, there was a lot of things discussed. There was topics spoken about carrots and sticks, citations, lawsuits, certificates of occupancy, just maybe to refresh your memory. So the carrot and the stick approach was suggested by council, which was a great idea. And that was to get the buildings in compliance with IMC, IPMC rules, regulations, codes, I should say. And shortly after that, we were asked to provide someone open the doors for inspection. I believe that happened a couple days later.
Yeah, we've been in there multiple times, yes.
Multiple times. There you go. So I will say what I was asked to do about opening the doors. Mr. Guthrie said it was to come up with a timeline, a reasonable amount of time for Franklin to complete these items. And also, the amount of fines would be determined thereafter. So if that happened, after about a week and a half after that inspection, I'd never heard anything what was, what was the final disposition of that. So I called Mr. Guthrie as to what was determined by the council to be the amount of fines and how much time was a reasonable amount of time given to him to complete it. At that time of that phone call, I was informed that the violations were remediated. I asked Mr. Guthrie what were Franklin Builders violations, and he began to tell me there were 14 or 15. I asked him if he would send me those violations, which he did promptly, right here. I thanked him for it. And I asked him about what was the fine amount that was, that, that we, that we asked for, the citations. And he told me it was $1,000 a day. I asked him the date of the start of the fines, and he replied March 6th, which happened to be the date of the letter to Franklin Brookhaven Builders. I asked him how, how much did he have to pay? He stated that he went to the Brookhaven Magisterial District Court and withdrew the filings because the violations were remedied. So brings me to four questions. Who did the inspection to confirm the violations were remedied? What was the date of the inspection? What date did Mr. Guthrie go to the district court to remove the filings? Why were we, the 84 unit owners, not notified of the council's decision? I ask the question, questions, because the violations in six out of the seven buildings So it's very complicated to me. You guys have asked a number of times. You were very good about, hey, let's finally get this in motion. Let's finally go over there and do something. The carrot and the stick came up. That's what happened. So one of the violations, which is extremely bothersome to me, is, is, let me find it. 2018 IFC 703.2, unsafe conditions. Maintenance discrepancies with fire-rated opening protectives amongst more fire sprinklers, portable fire extinguishers, and equipment rooms create an unsafe condition. So six out of the seven buildings, I believe, still have these violations, still have unsafe conditions, and no fines, no nothing, because they were withdrawn. How did that happen? So I had requested, as you guys know, Mr. Woollett sent me, I requested certificate of occupancy for each building. So what I think you guys could have done to help us out with our monetary situation, because a lot of these things that I believe the builder is responsible for are now falling on us, and we don't have any money. We don't have any money because the place was completely underfunded by the builder in his first shot at budget. He left out all these things. So guess why? We gotta answer.
They're trying to stick you, yeah.
Oh, he did stick us. He stuck us good. So one of the ways, I believe you guys are complicit in this, very complicit. When I got the results of my right to know, I have all certificate of occupancies for all seven buildings. Buildings 100, 300, 400, and 500 are listed with 26 units, 26, that have not been sold. They haven't been completed. So if you took 26 units times $300,000, you could have held up $7,800,000 worth of funds until this thing were completed. So how in the world did somebody, did anybody follow up on these temporary or 90-day or 60-day clearance orders?
We're gonna carefully go over all your points with the solicitor and engineer when you're done, but yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I don't expect you guys to answer. We would like an answer, but as a suggestion.
We'll give you the best answers we can, sure, but yeah.
I fully understand, and I appreciate it. I appreciate anything you can do for, for us, because, for example, the tagging of all the equipment, I believe that belongs to him, the sprinkler systems. No tags wherever, no third-party system ever came in. He never brought anybody in there to do that. Mr. Guthrie says that was all turned over to us. How does Mr. Guthrie know what was turned over to us? I only have heard three people say that it's been turned over to us. That's the builder, Pete Gebert, his henchman, Mr. Whitley, and Mr. Guthrie. But according to this, he would have been fined for these violations, and they still exist, and nobody here ever stopped them. They just let them build and build and build. Thank you. Mr. Catania, we will start with you.
The last part of the conversation, the fire alarm certification, it's an annual certification that's required to be done, whether it's done by the condo association or the property. It doesn't really matter to us. It's not done. When the, when the fire alarm and sprinkler systems were installed, the installer supplied the certifications that they were installed in accordance with the requirements, and they were tested properly. There's still required of annual inspections that, whether it's your responsibility or Franklin Developer's responsibility, we don't know, but those were not done. That's why the sprinklers and the fire alarm systems don't have the tags that you're speaking of. I may be mistaken, but I think they did come back and do, do some of that work, or maybe the fire alarm has been certified since then.
The what?
The fire alarm? If there was a fire alarm, I know at least one of the buildings that I was in, the fire alarm was recently serviced. But that's where we are with that part of it. So again, there's a dispute here, and this is probably more of a Jay Willis question, but there's a dispute here of when, like you hinted on, when this, this development was, became less the responsibility of the developer and the condo association. And I don't know if we really have that answer. He's indicating to us that as of a certain date, he lost control of the board, and that that point, it would be the board's responsibility to perform this work. So I don't, I don't know that answer. I'm not sure if Mr. Wills knows that answer at this point either.
My point is, three years that place has been in existence. Fire code said, once a year, somebody comes in and inspects. Mr. Catania is correct. No tag was hung on. We found one tag.
Oliver came in this year.
Excuse me?
Oliver came in this year. It was supposed to be there for three days.
Excuse me?
All right, all right. You guys aren't getting into a tussle.
Oh, no, I'm not getting into a tussle.
All right.
I'm not here to litigate this at all.
I, I.
I'm here to state fact.
I got it. Chris, if you want to chime in afterwards, kindly come up, but yeah. Mr. Wills?
With regard to the money that the borough was holding in escrow, that money was strictly for what we call site improvements.
$66,500 that he's already gotten back.
The, they, they would be for site improvements. As far as private improvements within the four corners of the various units, that's not something the monies that the borough was holding in escrow to ensure timely completion of those improvements. Again, the improvements were strictly for site improvements.
I understand.
That's what was being held in escrow, and that's what was required under the developer's agreement that was executed between the borough and the developer some three or four years ago, I guess, when this plan initially was approved for land development by the borough.
Do you think that has anything to do with what I'm talking about, fines?
With regard to the fines, again, the reasons why the building inspector chose to withdraw those citations, that information did not come before my desk. That was information I was unaware of. I don't know, quite frankly, who made that decision. I can simply tell you, it did not originate from my office.
Well, yes, I fully understand what you said. Mr. Guthrie said, told me on two occasions previously, he never goes to the judge when he knows if he doesn't have a winning case. That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, and again, that may be a judgment decision by the code enforcement officer. Again, he's given a certain degree of discretion and attitude as to how he performs his job. I can assure you, Borough Council does not micromanage that particular department, and obviously, he made a professional judgment. Again, the underlying reasons why the citations were withdrawn, I can't speak to that.
I'll read the last paragraph of the citation, the way I understand it. Your prompt correction of these violations is anticipated. Failure to correct these deficiencies may result in abatement action and liens being filed against the property. I want to focus on the abatement action. So I'll go back to what I found with the 26 units to withhold $7,800,000 from them because the safety conditions that was given a certificate of occupancy existed while these conditions, which still haven't been done, still haven't been done three years Thank you.
All right, here's everyone handle it. Mr. Catania, Mr. Wills, yourself and anyone else, get the builder in-person meeting, sitting at that table this week. Just make it happen, because we're really, I'm exhausted with dealing with this. I agree with you. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's still great deficiency. So we'll get a meeting this week, if you, if you have time. Is that okay? We can shout it out together. I'll attend it. We'll do it Wednesday or Thursday, and we'll take care of it. I know, I know the builder's hard to get a hold of. We'll get a hold of him, and we'll hash it out. It's just that simple. We'll have Mr. Guthrie here as well.
Okay.
Because you've spent far much, too much time on this. I apologize that it's taken so long.
No apologies.
And we are hamstrung. When you have a private builder like this, it's not like a, like a typical private, single-family residence, of course. Mr. Wills will tell you that. Mr. Catania will tell you that. It's been very frustrating, and I am sorry, sorry that you're dealing with it, but we'll, we'll meet this week. And if we can't meet this week, we'll meet next week during the week, and we'll hash it out right here in this room.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Chris, did you have anything to add?
The only thing I have to add, the last year Oliver came out, and they were supposed to come out for three days to test the fire alarms. One day is what we got. Okay, so I don't know what their position is in anything. And if what Paul said is true, the HOA board never came in or got anything until July 31st of last year. That's when his board of his cronies were out. And as far as I was going to mention, that our fire door in 700 is still not fixed. They did, like I told you guys, a month ago, play hide and seek with some of the things in some of the buildings.
I saw, they moved it around.
Yes. And they were probably on Paul's list. And I don't know what can.
It was like having a floor covered in crap and you.
Sort of cleaned it up.
Sweep it all into the corner, yeah. I, I noticed that when I was there.
And are we, you know, as homeowners, do we have use in occupancies over our units? That we can actually put our units on the market or whatever at this point? Because my understanding is the sample unit. Because my understanding is the sample unit has been sold and will make settlement in June. So I don't know what can be done at this point. And Paul, I'm not here to make arguments with anybody. I'm just stating what I know.
It's a frustrating situation.
Yes, it is.
We understand.
And I would like to see Franklin here to hear his, whatever excuses he has.
We can't drag him by the hair and get him here.
Oh, I know you can't.
I know that you may want to, but we will make our best effort to get him here.
Oh, I hope to hear that. But it is what it is.
Yeah.
And to penalize all of us, we are not an ending ATM machine. Because all we get are bills. I mean, we got reassessed last month by the management company for past two water bills of last year. And when I went back.
That they didn't pay?
Pardon?
That they didn't pay?
Somebody didn't pay them. I don't know who paid them or didn't pay them.
Who's responsible for paying them? Is the HOA or the individuals?
Supposedly, the way we were told was the community was to pay them, and we were to write our checks to the HOA, okay? But we are being billed by another company, and it's still that way. And in order to balance it out, I got hit with another $117 in water bills that I paid last.
To cover folks that didn't pay? Is it, do I have that right? Or you don't know?
I have no, all I know is on my dashboard is all the stuff that says, "I owe money." And I'm sitting here going, "No, I don't. I pay my bills," as Paul pays his and everybody else. So I don't know where that situation is. And I also understand, and Paul might know this better than I would, the DA's office is still in investigation going on. There's no charges or anything like that being pending on anybody. So I don't know. But that's what.
I can help with some of the things. As far as the builder goes, I don't think he's going to be that tough to get away, to get him at this table.
Okay.
He's called our management company twice. He wants to do everything he can. He says he's going to be around for a while.
Okay.
The man's got a $1.7 million insurance house that he's still paying a premium on, month after month after month. What that's for? Does it cover things that unforeseen? Does it give us 18 months worth of trying to get whatever we can out of them? We don't think, the reason the water bills were a problem, it's the most atrocious accounting that's ever been seen by our good management companies. It's taken them, I don't know how long, to figure this out. What happens is EMS comes out to read the meeting.
Yeah.
Associated and I, as a contractor. So we would pay Associated the bills. We would get the bills directly to our house, and then we would pay them to Associated. When all this money was transferred, all this money, to give you an example, well, what they were doing with the money was paying everybody else. And the reasoning for it was because of this extremely low $265 condo fee. Now he's got never made line items for a whole bunch of stuff. And we were due, everybody who bought in that place was due by that guy. They were tremendously low prices.
And we're not an attorney state, correct, with real estate transactions? That doesn't help either. Yeah.
Alls I'm asking for, and the other thing was, the last thing I see in our reserve fund was $39,000 we had. $39,000. That was in October, when final, after months of asking for all these records. When it was turned over, the reserve fund had zero. All our residents were asking, "Where did the money go?" The best possible idea was Reese, our management company, can't come up with. There's probably nothing nefarious that anybody did in Associated. But what he did is, in order to try to catch up or pay all the bills that were missing, all the grand start bills, all the $50,000 that we had to put a line rate.
And he paid what he could.
He paid what he could, and what he did, he probably borrowed the money, which he could, from his reserve fund. So when it came over, he spent it to try and pay Peter, you know.
Yeah.
Pay for it. So I don't think he'll have a tough time getting.
Getting him in here, yeah.
I don't think so, because he said he's going to be around for a long time.
What was that?
Godspeed.
Godspeed.
My understanding is, from his son, who I talked to last week, that they are officially done with us. And I don't know if you know this or not, Paul, February 27th of 2026, they are gone. They are done. That is when apparently the last unit was sold, that they have any responsibility to. And they sold supposedly.
2025 or 2026?
2026.
Oh, 2026, okay.
So it only has till February 27th of 26 for the units last sold. So there may be some in 300, there may be some in 100 that are in that realm. I don't know. But Jeff said to me that they were done February 27th of next year, and they were looking forward to that. So go figure. And the sample unit, supposedly, Jeff said, they sold without a warranty. And I could understand that.
You gentlemen, okay with meeting this week or next? If we have to push it during the week?
Next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
The lawyer says next week. Mr. Wills? What was that?
Friday.
Friday?
Mr. Leslie is apparently determining the schedule, so we will listen to.
Game's up on any Thursday, Friday, I'm good.
All right. Blame him.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Any Friday.
Friday is the seat.
Folks, we'll do what we can.
Please.
It's not easy.
It isn't.
Chief Montella.
I may not be at the meeting, but that doesn't mean that one, somebody else will be there. Another board.
Send someone in your stead.
Another, another board member will be there.
Thank you, Paul. Chief, thank you for your efforts and endless calls. I know you're running 24/7 right now with Crozier's closure.
Yes, we are. So.
And we'll get through it. It's terrible.
Mr. President, our residents, okay, abbreviating my report a little bit. I just want to touch on a couple things.
Yeah, we're gonna have about a two-hour meeting after this.
With Mr. Wills billing by the word, so yeah. All right, I'm just gonna shorten it up. We have 36 calls for the month. We had 10 firefighters who are in service for 196 hours. Five training sessions, average 20 firefighters, 180 hours in service. We had two building fires in the borough of Brookhaven, one on Victor Avenue, one at Stonehill Apartments. I'll just touch on the major things, three accidents. I'll skip the rest of them. We'll put that in a report. You guys can read when it comes out online. I just want to touch real quick on the Crozier crisis and the situation that the fire company, the borough, all of us are in. It has nothing to do with any of us or any of yous. We're in a real bad place right now. So if I have any hair by the end of it, it'll be a great thing, but we don't know. So.
You have a few black hairs left.
Yeah, I can paint it. You know that. So where we're at with that, we do, Brookhaven does have a chase car assigned to it, the Riddle Hospital, stationed at Middletown's fire company, which is only right up the street. Our former car was at Aston. Mileage-wise, it's probably even a little quicker from Middletown, whether or not, because I'd like to get here. That's paid for for 90 days through the county, through some money the county came up with. The fire company is actively working on some type of situation where we can have a car provide ALS service for us. We're looking for something permanent, not a temporary patch. There's a lot of for-profit, like Prospect, coming into Delaware County, thinking they're gonna make it, EMS. There's not a lot of money in EMS, okay? Plus our little fire company, $24,000 every two weeks just to make a payroll. That's a lot of money for a little fire company like us, okay? We survive on what we recoup based on transporting people to the hospital. That's all we get. We're trying to put something in place where we can protect our residents from somebody else coming in and smacking us over the head with additional bills. On top of, we're gonna have to pay for the service. So the situation we're at right now, I attended two county Zoom meetings along with Terry and Sherry. Informative meetings, but mostly the time it was the same information over and over again, okay? I attended one Zoom meeting with the EHS council from the county that was fire chiefs and stuff. We also had a work group trying to figure out how we're gonna get through this situation as well. Last week, I was out of town on vacation. Terry and my brother, who's our EMS administrator, attended, and I think Sherry was over.
Mr. Burke also, yeah.
Burke was there at Nether Providence, discussing the same topic. Everybody's got this problem. We gotta come up with a solution, right? So they attended that meeting in place of me. My brother went to that meeting, and they had some discussions on that and where we were heading there. I had three meetings with Middletown's fire chief on trying to, my brother's involved in a regional, regionalization is the way to go, right? Brookhaven cannot afford a car by itself. Taxpayer's too much money.
Just give the public a general estimate of what that is.
For that car to be up, we're estimating between $600,000 and $800,000 for one car.
That, right, that's a 13% tax increase, right, Mr. Wills, about, give or take? I don't want to give you a heart attack, because there's no hospital to go to if you have one, so. But yeah, that is the staggering cost that you're facing.
So we're trying to get it at the best pricing we can, the best bang for the buck, but still with paramedic coverage. And kind of maybe leaning towards a for-profit ALS company to come in here. The fortunate thing is, this fire company has mutual aid agreements with Aston Township and Middletown Township. So when our ambulances are tied up and we're transporting to Wilmington, Delaware, Paoli, and the other ambulances in, let's say, Lankinall, happens all the time. So our ambulances are nowhere near Brookhaven. Aston backs us up, Middletown backs us up. You subscribe to our ambulance, they honor you. That's hard to do. Not many fire companies do that, but we have that working relationship between the two. And we have one at Swatmore as well when we do Nether Providence, when we cover Garden City section over there. So that being said, it's almost puts like six ambulances right here in our region, ALS trucks. But in our area, that one chase car can maybe cover Brookhaven. Right now, it's scheduled Brookhaven, Parkside, Upland, and Chester Township. And that's the Riddle car. So our first model is to go maybe get pricing from Riddle, being it's already in place. See how they want to work it, see how that goes. They're reputable, they're hospital-based, they've been there for a long time, right? And we've worked with them in the past. And then our second plan was Middletown Fire Company and Rocky Run have an ALS license. If Riddle's high or whatever, that's another route for us to go. And I know Terry went to the meeting the other night that I did not make, so he has some information on that BSMC.
Yeah, with Park.
Taken over Chester City.
Parkside, Chester Township, Upland, Middletown, but Middletown's rep was there for Chester Township and Brookhaven, yeah.
Yeah. So that's where we're at with that as far as them. Now, they went in Chester City and put a couple ambulances up, a chase car up, and didn't charge the residents nothing, but they went to Springfield and charged them beaucoup. So they think they're gonna recoup the money in the city of Chester based on the amount of ambulance calls. And there's a lot of ambulance calls in Chester. What? Two trucks, multiple people on a truck, a paramedic chief. That's a lot of dough going out. And you've got to recuperate that money down there and then make money. So that's a building place for a year. So I don't know, I don't, did he give you any numbers on that, Terry?
For Chester?
Yeah.
I didn't get a number for Chester. They're not charging Chester.
They're free, that's what I'm saying. But do they have a projected number of what they're gonna generate? No.
No, I work in finance, but I don't work in that type of finance. I told him, in a year, you're gonna be going back to them and saying it's gonna cost $2 million a year based on the EMS professionals.
My brother's our treasurer too for our EMS side. He can tell you, he knows your payer mix and all that. Do we make, recoup a lot of money in Chester? Are we using money?
It's in the single digits, the reimbursement rate, so.
It's just, it's based on payer mixes, insurances, that kind of thing. You know, sometimes we get paid 40 bucks, 80 bucks, 120 bucks. But if you're a subscriber, that'll be $600 in the life.
But it's not gonna work down there long-term. But I would assume it gives, if we regionalize and there's another regionalization around us, it gives us breathing room that they're at least covered for X amount of months or a year. So there's that positive.
They got breathing room, that's what they have. But a year from now, we can.
We'll be covering them.
Right back, we'll be covered, but they'll be right back there. I guess where all our ambulances are gonna be going.
Down there.
Right back down there, just like we were doing, okay? So, you know, we have to go, we're called. We've been through that 100 times, right? But we have a, trying to set a meeting up with Riddle right now, Middletown, and us, and see how this is going. We did find out today that Aston is actually kind of wiggly. Aston looked like a temporary thing, kind of like we have, but a temporary thing.
You're paying $98,000 a month.
Aston.
$98,000 a month.
All right, so it's a big variation in monies. So we're looking to protect.
I could hear the gasps from the audience.
We're looking to protect our residents the best we can, but not put something short-term. It's like putting a patch on a flat tire, right? We don't want to be back here, right? So it's nerve-wracking. It's, a lot of decisions have to be made. These private guys are coming in and, you know, making everything sound great, but it isn't always great, you know? There's a number of what it costs to operate, right? With people, salaries, the benefits, the cars.
They see blood in the water and they circle. It's, we understand, we understand business, but there's business and there's also complete lack of ethics and rushing municipalities into terrible decisions, which several in Delaware County did. We're not going to be put in the same position.
Right. We want to go through this. I mean, we have a little bit of breathing room right now with the 90 days to negotiate with people and meet with people and try to get it right. I mean, we'll give it a best shot. It might not work there, it might not work there. Who knows? Then we got to turn to the next spot. But, you know, we're looking for something not to be a temporary fix and be right back in the same thing. This is very, very nerve-wracking, you know, you know, you got to get people to hospitals safely. We're traveling, wait, we're traveling. If we can't get to Riddle, our ambulance is gone for an hour and 20 minutes minimum to get back to Brookhaven.
Riddle's got to be overwhelmed.
They are.
They are already overwhelmed, so.
I mean, the only thing I'm looking at that is sometimes when you do partner with them, or you might get a little bit of leniency getting people to your hospital if you partner with them a little bit. So it might help us a little bit, not saying a lot, but we don't know where we're at though.
It's arguably the worst crisis in Delaware County's modern history. We're down four, don't forget DCMH, don't forget Springfield. We're down four hospitals. Everyone's focused on Crozier right now, because you have the trauma center, the burn unit, et cetera, et cetera, but.
We're doing different things that we never had to do. Years ago, we did it, you know, and now somebody's really trauma or whatever. You're gonna hear helicopters landing in Brookhaven like you never did.
You see more choppers than I did when I was in Manhattan a few weeks ago.
That's the only way. You got to get them, fly them out, get them to a trauma center, right? Because by ground, it just takes too long.
And they cost $22,000 a flight, and they're gonna rely on insurance to pay that back. Good luck with that.
So that's where we're at. I mean, we're council, and, you know, they've been just as much into these meetings as we are. Sometimes it's the same meeting over and over, that we're just wanting to be right by the end of it.
I'm setting everything aside, and this is our main focus. People will die. We, you know, we talked two months about this, two months ago about this in a public meeting. Seemed a little dramatic, but thanks to you and your brother, who's just fantastic. Seemed a little dramatic, but thanks to you and your brother, who's just fantastic. You warned us two years ago. We sat right here with Tony Esposito in a private meeting.
We just talked about that.
And when Mr. Esposito, who takes a little too much blame, I think, it's Prospect, they're the scumbags, it's, Esposito is Esposito, and he tried to charge us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a paramedic service. And we said, "We're not paying it." For some reason, just saying we're not paying it, they kind of went away. We knew that within a year or two, we'd be right here, and now the cost has gone up. But, this is really, really ugly.
So, us regionalizing or partner with other towns, that's going to be the way. I mean, I don't know how Aston thinks they can do that by themselves.
A little bit of a rush.
And that can be shared, you know, Aston's car was covering Brookhaven, Parkside, Upland, Chester Township, so it's basically the same thing. So, maybe Middletown's involved and Aston's not. But I already got the okay from Aston that they're honoring all our stuff, and their car is going to come here as a backup for our car. So, that's a good thing, right? So, we have really two cars, and then Riddle Hospital still has a truck. That's three ALS trucks that would be able to come here. So, that's where we're at with that.
I want to say, you know, forging these partnerships with neighboring towns, forgive me, Upland, I forgot the name of all your elected leaders, I meant, I'm not good at names, but they were good. Councilwoman Percival in Parkside was fantastic. Bill Rigby was fantastic. They're looking to partner. You had the folks in Nether Province media. So, there's, everyone's coming together to keep those lives from being saved. At least, at the very least, get them to a hospital, no matter which hospital. And you and your brother have been absolutely awesome. I know it's nonstop twenty-four seven, you're probably sick of my calls, but it's, this is number one. Right now, it's number one. We can't open the hospitals. That's for the higher-level politicians that I think left us for dead. It's not the time for politics, but this is a two-party systematic failure. They all saw it coming three years, and they didn't do anything about it. And to have, to be down this many hospitals in a county, prominence of Delaware County with five hundred and fifty thousand residents is sick. I have a hunting cabin in the middle of the state. The nearest hospital's forty-five minutes away. I feel safer up there. I accidentally shoot myself at one of my gun ranges. Because we have a contingency plan to go to the bottom of the mountain, and the helo picks us up in a cornfield. That's what you're going to have here.
Yep.
Got to get those hospitals open. Maybe when the BK goes through, Penn will come in, that same consortium will come in. We have so little control over that. We have the power on the local level to get the paramedics to keep the paramedics going. So, that's what we'll do. And we do have the ability to get together with the other local governments around the county to push the county, to push the governor, but it's going to take some loud mouths and some screaming and some pounding of the desks. It really is, so.
But we're up for it.
Right on cue, there's the setup. I know you're up for it. Thank you.
All right. I just made that a little bit shorter, but.
And you're sticking around with us, you and Dave?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
Chief Havik, sir. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Trying to be brief as well. Again, there'll be more details in the written report that's submitted to council. For the month, we did handle six hundred and fifty-six calls for service. We filed eight criminal cases and seven non-traffic summary cases with the district court. We handled sixteen thefts, including one auto theft, and we'll talk about that in a second just briefly. Thirty vehicle crashes, one hundred and ninety-three security checks, fifteen citations were issued, seventy traffic warnings were issued, and we drove three thousand eight hundred and three miles on patrol during the month. Quickly, we did have a vehicle theft this month. Again, the car was recovered in Chester later that day, and several people were arrested. I feel like I shouldn't have to say this in the year of our Lord 2025, but you cannot leave your car unlocked with the key fob inside of it, no matter where you live.
Sorry.
Okay? This isn't Mayberry, all right? We live two miles from a very high crime area of the state, and the people that are coming to Brookhaven to commit crimes aren't Brookhaven residents, right? They're coming here, it's transient traffic committing crimes. So, I say this to say, don't make yourself a victim. On the heels of that, Officer Zedley was on patrol on a midnight shift a couple weeks ago and saw a suspicious person walking down Mount Vernon Avenue at two in the morning. Abnormal. He happens to notice there was a couple cars that he immediately sees and the dome lights are off. So, he, obviously, the astute cop he is, gets out, puts a stop on this guy, and his pockets are all loaded up with stuff from all these cars that were parked nearby that were unlocked, that he went into and took various stuff. Again, this, this keeps happening because people think, and we've had people say to us, "Well, I'm not going to lock the car," even after we wake them up in the middle of the night and say your car was coming through. "Well, I don't keep anything valuable in there, and I'm not going to lock it." Well, these transient people come here to commit crime because they keep being successful, right? So, if everyone locks your cars, and every time they come to Brookhaven and they pop out and they open, they pull on fifty car door handles, and none of them are open, eventually they're going to start going somewhere else. And that's not going to be an us problem. So, that's all I can tell you, is like, we need to lock our cars. You know, it's one thing if your car gets broken into and they do the Kia boy's trick and they, you know, they steal it. There's nothing we can do about that. But my heart breaks when I come in and I read this report in the morning, and I read, "The car was unlocked and the key fob was inside of it." It just boggles my mind. Anyway, off my high horse on that. So, we did get a couple donations over the month. Real Church dropped off a bunch of snacks. We also got a lunch donated from Franklin Credit Union in town. Just obviously can't stress enough how thankful we are to the support we get from the community. I do want to mention that our department, I left them at the station, but I'll get them before the end of the meeting. We created a limited run challenge coin that we're going to be selling to benefit the Hope for Haley Foundation. Obviously, we're a great partner of the organization, and, you know, every time we meet with them and see them, they talk about how beneficial the money we've raised for them over the years has been to their program. Thank you, Sharon. So, we created these limited run challenge coins that we have for sale for fifteen dollars each, and all the proceeds are going to benefit the Hope for Haley Foundation. I'm just going to take this out real quick to show you. So, it has our Hope for Haley Brookhaven Police Patch that we designed a couple years ago on one side, and then on the other side is their beautiful logo. So, we have these, it's a really cool collector piece. Challenge coins are big, it's like a cop thing, a lot of us, we collect these things, but they're really cool. You can set them on a shelf, just put them on display. And again, this benefits a great organization, so we have a limited run of these that we're going to be selling for fifteen each. You can get them at the station during business hours. We take cash, we do have a Venmo set up in case your digital currency gathering myself. If you want to buy multiple units or you have questions, you can email hope@brookhavenpolice.com, and that will get to somebody who can answer your questions. And just quickly, for the month, we had some training. Detective Wetton went to SWAT training. Officer Viola successfully completed field training program, and he's on a squad and assigned to a regular rotation, actually starting tonight. He's very excited about that. He's also excited to have every other weekend off, because in Philly, he only had every weekend, a full weekend off, like every three months, so he's looking forward to that. Officer Rohr and Officer Connor completed the range qualification on this month under the direction of Detective Wetton, and Officer Martin recertified as a TASER energy weapon instructor. And again, my full report with some additional information along with the call for service list and our statistics for the month will be provided for further inspection if needed. Oh, and broken, I did want to mention, actually, I think it's important for everybody in the room to hear this as well. I've already told some people on council about this, but this EMS issue affects the police department too. Not so much like, we're obviously prepared and trained to do, you know, first aid and do preventative care while we await the ambulance, which inevitably we expect is going to have longer response times. We're trained to do that, and we're not worried about doing this. I mean, you see occasionally, we give these awards, like we're getting in it with the fire department saving lives all the time. But there's little things that even we didn't realize were going to be such a problem. Last week, there was an accident on Dunhill Road. The guy was drunk, it was like five in the afternoon, he flips his car, it gets all banged up. So, he has to, he's under, he's going to get, you know, he's getting charged with DUI. We have to get a blood draw from this guy. It's usually done at the hospital. He has to go to a trauma center. The nearest one was Lankinol. It's out of the county. So, we don't know what their policies and procedures are with their lab, so our officer had to leave the borough and follow the ambulance to Lankinol just to get the blood from the hospital to bring it back here.
Rush hour on a Friday.
Rush hour on a Friday. Now, luckily, it was around shift change, so the other officer was coming in, so we weren't short. But I can just imagine this occurring, you know, when someone's off, and we have, you know, limited manpower, there's other stuff going on. And like, this is a real issue that not having these trauma centers in the area is really harmful. In the past, if, even if we didn't have the ability to follow the ambulance to the hospital, if they went to Crozier, we knew their policies and procedures. We knew we could call their lab and say, "Hey, we're going to search warrant this blood, we're going to be there tomorrow with the warrant." Hold it, and they would hold it. You know, dealing with these new hospitals and even out of the county, we wouldn't even be able to apply for a warrant. We'd have to deal with the agency of jurisdiction there, Lower Mary, and have them file a warrant on our behalf. And then, we're dealing with chain of custody issues and all kinds of stuff. So, there's just, just saying this to the point that this is bigger than just like the EMS side of it. It's like a ripple effect affecting everybody in the chain here. And I just think if you haven't done so already, you know, we need to start screaming at our legislators at the state level and even, you know, that represent us in the federal government, say, "What the heck are we doing here?" Because it's a bad, it's a bad problem all the way. I think, you know, Chief Montel stresses it every time, and I just think it's crazy just how much it's affecting everything, so. That's all I know.
It's going to have to take the majority of the local governments in Delaware County to get together and push that way. Thank you, chief. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a reminder of our Memorial Day service is Thursday, May twenty-second at six-thirty here in the gym. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Will, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's office in the event any members of the public would care to review it. I have also been requested in no uncertain terms to keep my report brief. The optimum word being brief. I have two action items for Borough Council's consideration. One is a motion to advertise an ordinance rescinding and amending certain subsections of ordinance number eight thirty-one, codified as chapter four eighty-two in the traffic code of the Borough of Brookhaven entitled "Towing, Impounding, and Storage of Motor Vehicles." Now, the purpose of this amended ordinance is to resolve certain inconsistencies with some of the provisions in the proposed towing contract between the Borough and Steve Luongo's Towing, Inc., and the Borough Borough's present towing ordinance number eight thirty-one. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to advertise said ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed? Motion carries.
The second item, action item, concerns the emergency declaration that was executed and signed by Madame Mayor Denise Leslie back on April the twenty-first of 2025, again, as a result of the insolvency of Prospect Medical Holdings and the imminent closure of the Crozier Health System in Delaware County. Now, pursuant to certain provisions in the Pennsylvania Borough Code, that emergency declaration generally expires at the conclusion of seven days. And therefore, if we wish to continue that emergency declaration, which I believe there are grievous underlying reasons for continuing the emergency declaration here in the Borough of Brookhaven, the Borough would have to pass a resolution authorizing same. And therefore, I have prepared a resolution for Borough Council's consideration, basically extending the emergency declaration, signed and proclaimed by the mayor on April twenty-first as a result of the insolvency, again, and closure of the Crozier Health System. This emergency declaration would continue to a date indefinitely uncertain, again, until this emergency situation has been resolved. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed? Motion carries.
Very, very, other quick items for public and council's assumption are as follows. The Our Lady of Charity School property, as we know, the Borough went to settlement on this particular property back on April the second, again, in which case the Borough acquired ownership of seven point six-three acres of open space property. That property deed conveying ownership to the Borough has been duly recorded with the Delaware County Recorder Deeds Office, and a copy of that recorded deed is now in the safe hands of the Borough Secretary. Amendments to the Borough's Noise Control Ordinance, again, I have worked extensively with Councilman and Ordinance Committee Chair Dan Burke and the Ordinance Committee, as well as Chief Havik, in drafting certain revisions to the Borough's Noise Control Ordinance. This proposed ordinance will be subject to a vote for adoption this evening under Councilman Burke's report. Next, I have also what we have is for this evening's consideration is a proposed smoke shop ordinance. Again, I had drafted an ordinance amending the zoning code to add a definition of a smoke shop and to permit smoke shops only as a conditional use in the C-one and C-two commercial zoning district. Again, this proposed ordinance will be subject to a vote to advertise this evening under Councilman Burke's report, because this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. I have also forwarded a copy to the Delaware County Planning Commission for their review and recommendations. And then, finally, some good news with regard to the Delco Greenways Grant. On May the first, four days ago, Borough Council approved payment to the Borough in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as the second disbursement of that Delco Greenways Grant. Again, that is for the acquisition of the OLC property complex. That check is expected to be mailed later this month, and I expect that to be in the Borough's coffers within the next two weeks or so. Again, the Borough has received a total of six hundred thousand dollars in county and in state grants toward the purchase of the OLC property complex. That is certainly good news. Now, with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Mr. Will. Mr. Katania, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up, we have a DCED grant application. This is for a Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program for Parks and Recreation Grant up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We need to basically pass a resolution authorizing submission of the application, and the council president, the Borough Secretary, to sign any documents that require to do the same. What we need to do is we need to kind of select the project, what we want to apply for. So, the resolution would read Borough Council, Brookhaven Borough, here I request the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant for a grant up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we would just fill in the name of the project.
Can we tack it on to OLC?
Do anything you want, sir.
Is this for consideration?
It cannot reimburse you for costs already expended on OLC.
That was my next question.
But it could be used for anything you want.
This is for consideration for June?
This is due May thirty-first, so we need to-
Oh, so it has to be passed now. Recreation folks, what say you?
I'll make a motion. Is that what you need?
All right, we can do it then, consider, because we don't have to go through with it. Take the motion then?
Wait, what?
We need a project.
No, we need a project.
Project.
We need a project.
The cart before the horse.
Well, that's why I said recreation folks. Hurry up, you have thirty seconds, guys.
We did-
Tom, we don't need to hear from you yet.
Really?
I thought you had an answer.
You asked for recreation.
Tom, step on up to the microphone.
No, we already did the one for Garcia.
We have granted right now for this, from the state, for Garcia Park improvements. We know we have some work we would propose to a charity. That may be a little premature, since I think the committee hasn't really made, done any work on that.
It is, and we've postponed, we've sort of postponed our meetings for a couple of weeks because we're in a crunch with the ALS crisis.
Memorial Park, we know there's some work, we want it to be done down there.
Was this for Memorial Park?
Again, any park and recreation grant.
Was this the one that we discussed about doing for the parking lot?
It could qualify.
Then I say, we do that one.
That's fine.
Do that or Somerville, one of the other.
There you go.
Somerville, we have a community development grant we need to hear on, which is gonna be in the June-July timeframe. Walking Trails and other, we actually applied for a grant for the walking trails.
Yeah, we did the walking trail for the last one, so I thought we had discussed that this one was gonna be for Memorial to adjust the, the parking.
There you go. Good luck, folks. Janice, you took the motion, correct? Who wants the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed?
So, Charles?
It would be granted to Borough Council of Brookhaven, hereby requesting Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant up to $250,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for Memorial Park parking accessibility improvements.
15% match?
15% match.
50 or 15?
1.5.
15.
10%. 50, I would have opposed. Is that it?
Well, there's more. Edgemont Avenue and Whitley Road, this has been on our agenda for a little bit. In order to get this to move forward, Borough Council needs to pass a resolution authorizing submission of a PennDOT Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement. As you're aware, the Borough is responsible for the operation and maintenance of all traffic signals. PennDOT needs to approve any changes to be made to those traffic signals. In order to facilitate that, the state has set up this traffic signal maintenance agreement should be executed, which just kind of cuts some paperwork down the line, so I'm gonna recommend the Council pass this resolution authorizing the execution of the traffic signal maintenance agreement with PennDOT.
So I'll make a motion for the resolution, and then PennDOT's gonna let us know if there's any improvements?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, they're coming up in the next two motions.
That's fine.
Who wants the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or questioned? Motion carries, and the previous motion carries.
So, it's kind of a similar vein, there, there, we need to make a submission for a traffic signal permit modification to PennDOT. I'm gonna seek authorization to submit that application, then also with that, it would be authorization for our office to act as agent for the Borough to submit that application.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed? Motion carries.
And then finally, the Borough Municipal Complex Calling Tower, we know this is in bad shape. Three prices were received through the Co-Stars Contract Program and Scanon Associates of Booth Wind was low price at $149,408. I'm gonna recommend award of that contract to Scanon Associates.
Was this, but, this was budgeted?
This was budgeted.
What do we budget, how much we budget?
I believe 180, if I'm not mistaken.
So good. All right.
So, do you want to make a motion for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed?
No, I just have a question. How long does it take once it's, the project is started?
Everything's two weeks.
Two weeks, um.
Is it like a, a month?
It's gonna be the, unfortunately, the, the, getting the equipment, so.
Okay.
I will, I'll find out tomorrow.
No, that's fine. So, it'll probably be during the summer?
We hope to have it done prior to that, but it's all gonna depend upon the supplier.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
That's all I have, though. Thank you.
There's a question? What was the question, Harry? You don't have a mic.
Do it later in the year, instead of this summer, maybe September, or October.
Will it last?
Yeah.
Oh, but which way, my question? Yeah, that's fine.
John's laughing, indicating it won't last. Charles, you're the engineer.
I'm told, I'm told that the parts are not readily available if it should fail.
So as soon as possible?
Well, yeah, we'll see what that date I get from the contractor.
You already had to fix a broken flange here.
All right.
Get the parts from the mechanic.
First thing I have, folks, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. First thing I have is, we are meeting an exec, as I said earlier, immediately following this meeting, with Council, Chief Havick, Dave Montella and Chief Montella regarding the Crozier crisis, focusing heavily on regionalization, whatever our plans are gonna be. To continue, there's no gap in paramedic coverage. That will be our primary focus until we have something in place. I met Thursday, May 1st, with the, with local EMS and government leaders from Parkside, Chester Township, Upland, and Milltown to discuss ALS plans, potential regionalization. We are gonna meet again this Thursday at 5 o'clock PM. I want to invite the Montella brothers to that, if you are able. On Wednesday, April 30th, I attended a county Zoom meeting regarding the Crozier ALS crisis, which confirmed much-needed county funding coverage of ALS service for a period of 90 days, which was actually absolutely incredible. Anyone that did not sign, rushed to sign a, an agreement with a third-party provider will be granted coverage for at least 90 days. We're hoping for a little more. Wednesday, April 22nd, I had a conference call with a solicitor and commissioner from neighboring township to discuss potential regionalization. That was not at all beneficial to Brookhaven, so we decided to go ahead and pull on, pull out on that. It would have been an absolute fortune. Other than that, it's been nothing but phone calls with neighboring EMS leaders, elected officials, et cetera, due to, who, or I should say, to discuss the possible ALS, ALS regionalization. And we will have updates as we have them, we will have a whole lot more information after our executive session tonight. I cannot thank our neighboring, our partnering towns, the elected, the elected officials, the EMS professionals, both in Brookhaven and, um, in other towns that have really been working around the clock on this. Again, this is one of the biggest crises that Delaware County has ever faced, I cannot overstate it enough. But we will get through it. And again, I want to be clear, we can bring the hospitals back, we can make pressure, we can partner with some of our other local municipalities in Delco to do so, we can hope for the, the thought is the bankruptcy will clear, and maybe that same consortium will come back in and buy it, but, um, it'll be pretty scary if, if Crozier and Taylor stay closed for any extended period of time. But we will at least have paramedics to get you to some qualified hospital, that's for sure, and they will be qualified paramedics. And I'm gonna state this, and I do not mean to be heavy-handed, I discussed this with council, I want to be careful the way I word this. Brookhaven Borough has taken ownership of seven and a half acres along Ridley Creek. It is now municipal-owned property. We are not anti-hunters or anti-gun up here, I actually own my own gun range with 19 other owners. I'm not a hunter, but I, we do have a hunting club, a member of a hunting club. However, you may not hunt on borough-owned property, municipal-owned property. There is a very nice deer stand down there, a very nice automatic corn feeder for deer, sensor with lights, and there is evidence that it was not bow hunting. I'll leave it at that. So if anyone knows the individual, kindly retrieve all of your equipment from that property. If not, Public Works will have to remove it. No one's in trouble? Just please come get it, it's very expensive. Again, not to be heavy-handed, it's simply just not permitted. You cannot discharge firearms within the borough. And last, I want to thank everyone that reached out to myself, my daughter, my family, Mrs. Heller, regarding our most recent loss. Your thoughts and prayers and kind words mean more than you'll ever know, believe me. Ms. Sawicki.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have one more. That's why I have John, that's why he gets the big bucks. I just need a motion to approve the April 7, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Sawicki.
Thank you. We do have some bills to pay tonight, so for the May bill list, general fund is $111,975.21. Sewer fund is $11,902.80. Trash fund is $720, for a total of $124,598.11. So I am making a motion so we can approve those bills this month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions opposed? Motion carries.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Ms. Fovio.
Um, the next Business Revitalization Committee meeting will be on May 12th at 7:00 PM. The next Sustainability Committee meeting will be on May 27th at 7:00 PM. And on, uh, June 1st at 1:00 PM in the Municipal Center Community Room, the Sustainability Committee will host a talk by Penn State Extension Master Gardener, Todd Johnson, on container gardening and native plant gardening for ecosystem restoration. It's free and open to all, so, um, we hope to see you there. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Fovio. You were so fast, I lost track. Mrs. Heller.
So I have a few things. Um, I want to thank the fire department, the rack board, all of our senior groups, the real church that helped with the Easter egg hunt, um, and the stuffing on the 8th. It was a, a great day. There was over 8,000 eggs that were stuffed. We had to reschedule the Easter egg hunt due to weather, um, but it was, again, a great success on the 19th of, of April. And we also assisted with the Boy Scouts, they had their first annual breakfast with the, with the bunny as well. We have, uh, the chat committee met on the 10th and the 29th. We covered the newsletter, um, Earth Day, website updates, um, we'll have on, and obviously the, uh, alerts. The, the next meeting is going to be on May 8th at 7:00 PM. The parade committee did not meet in April, but our next meeting is going to be this next Wednesday, the 14th, at 7:30 PM. Um, I want to thank Eagle Scout Brendan Bennett for on Saturday, April 12th, and again, this past Saturday, um, they, he's working on his Eagle Scout project, which is a shed over at the sanctuary. They, uh, poured the foundation on the 12th, and then, uh, on Saturday, they created the shed, they did an amazing job. They're not done yet, they have to add on, um, the shed roof, um, just the shingles, and they have to paint it. So I, I can't thank them enough for all the hard work that they do.
It looks absolutely beautiful, too.
Yeah. Um, on April 22nd, council and the mayor recognized our office staff for Administrative Professional Day. Uh, lunch was provided. I cannot thank our administrative staff enough. They are truly our backbone of, um, the borough, the day-to-day, um, that they do, so we are greatly appreciative of all their hard work that they do. We already talked about the, some of the meetings that were attended for the EMS ALS, so I don't want to have to recap that. I'm gonna have Tom cover the Family Day meeting, as well as the Rack Board, since it conflicted with some of the ALS meetings that we were attending. The Rack Board did hold their Spring Fling Dance on Friday, the 25th, for the fifth and sixth graders. Um, we had over 50 kids, it was really, um, a great time, they were a great group of kids. A lot of the parents thanked us for having those events. Um, on the 27th of April, artful aging occurred, they ended up doing a beautiful, uh, board that was a chalk, kind of like a chalkboard type thing that they can hang. Um, on the 27th, I also had a conference call with another scout from Shack Haven that is looking to do another Eagle Scout project. We haven't come up, he has not finalized his project, so once he does, we'll have him at our meeting, so he can discuss it with council, so council can approve it. On the 30th, I had a conference call with Diane, I'm sorry, Danielle, she's a program manager from Franklin Mint Credit Union. And on Wednesday, May 14th, they are going to have four to six of their employees volunteering over at the sanctuary. So Mr. Heller and Mr. McKenna are going to meet with them and actually have them do some reading for us, which we are grateful for them and their volunteering. Um, one of the things that I just wanted to add, um, before I go into some of the other report stuff, uh, when we attended the Delco Virtual Info Session on the, in reference to the Crozier Health System closing, one of the key things that they talked about, and it, and it was, I think, critical, obviously, everything is critical, but one of the things that they talked about was, because this closure happened so quickly, um, the employees of Crozier, the nurses, all the staff there, um, were not properly given enough time to look for employment. So, um, what they asked from the county is if we can put out as much information as we can in, in reference to their, their workforce, uh, reemployment. So, um, the executive director from the Delaware County Workforce Development Board, there's a lot on Delaware County's website in reference to it. They are having a job fair on Tuesday, um, May 13th from 10 to 2 at Subaru Park in Chester. So they really want those that have worked at Crozier or Taylor to, um, you know, attend these job fairs, so that they can help them, um, find, uh, some work for them. So I, I know that that was a, a critical piece that they wanted us to, to get out. This, um, Saturday is the Concert in the Park at Eaton, it's the Echoes of the British Invasion. They were here last year, obviously, their invasion didn't last very long, just for the few hours, um, but they were a great band, so, uh, early Mother's Day for those to come out and actually enjoy it, it's a beautiful, um, time out in the park, our parks. Um, I want to wish all the mothers a wonderful, happy birth, uh, Happy Mother's Day. Um, and I want to wish Sadie Fuller and Officer John Zebly a happy birthday, their birthdays will be between now and our next meeting. And on top of, uh, Sunday being, you know, May the 4th, be with you, it was also International Firefighters' Day, so hearts out to our firefighters over there, we think about you every single solitary day, especially today, knowing what today is, so we love you all, and Chris will always be in our memory as well. Also, this is, um, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month, which is very critical, since we, right now, don't have a crisis center in Delaware County. Um, the closest one, I believe, is at, uh, Chester County, so we need to make sure that we're looking out for each other. Um, we need to really stay healthy mentally, physically, and emotionally, so please make sure that you're checking in on all of your family and friends and your neighbors. Um, and on April 16th, Chief Havick, myself, and Mr. Heller attended the Hope for Hallie Grand Opening, um, which Chief Havick was able to introduce the, the coin, which I thought was perfect timing. They were, uh, over the, the moon with the thought, and I think having it start for this month is just, uh, perfect timing, since it is Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, just a few things, um, I want to thank, uh, Town Watch, they made, uh, oodles of donations in 2025, and sometimes I think that they are the forgotten, I think that they were, you know, one of the very first, you know, committees back in the day, um, but they, they did donate a lot of money in 2025 to the Brookhaven Girl Softball, um, Babe Ruth, um, they donated, I, I think I touched on it last month, to a needy family, um, the Cub Scout Pack 493 for their Derby sponsorship, the Brookhaven Fire Company Bingo, which is this Friday. Um, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend its post-prom, so y'all know where I'll be.
Just send a jack.
You know it, you know, I never visit them anyway, so. Um, and that they also donated to, um, three Sun Valley Senior Awards this year, totaling for $2,450, so we really want to thank them for their donations. Um, and, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Pappas. Mr. Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The OLC Committee chaired by Councilwoman Heller and, uh, Councilwoman Heller were in it, were attendants on, uh, Thursday, April 10th, to discuss matters concerning the former OLC school property now owned by the Borough. Topics included ongoing maintenance needs and the process of selecting a new name for the site. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM. Uh, the Ordinance Committee met on Thursday, April 17th to review a proposed ordinance amending the Borough's zoning code. This ordinance would define and regulate smoke shops, which are retail or wholesale establishments, primarily selling tobacco, vaping products, and other type of sundries. If adopted, smoke shop would be permitted as a conditional use in C1, C2 commercial zoning districts, provided they are not located within 1,000 feet of another smoke shop or any school. Uh, the Ordinance Committee's next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 15th at 6:30 PM. Uh, please note, we will, the Ordinance Committee will not be meeting in person during the months of June or July. Uh, we've got some conflicts of the schedule, so we'll be doing our work virtually, uh, via email. I do have two action items. Uh, the first is a motion to approve the amended noise control ordinance, which sets enforcement hours from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM throughout most of the year, with extended hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM during the summer season, which is defined as Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. So if I can get a second on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or questioned? Good job, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. And my next motion is to advertise the proposed ordinance amending the Borough's zoning code to define and regulate smoke shops as outlined in the Ordinance Committee Report.
I'd like to clap before you take this motion, but who wants the second? I'd like to clap before you take this motion, but who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, that the answer will always be no for future councils, but one can only hope. Mr. DePlicky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Good evening. Trying to be brief, get ready for our exec session later. I'll start with Public Works. The seasonal branch chipping started today. It'll continue on Wednesday as well as Friday, and then next week, Tuesday and Thursday. So if any resident has limb debris they want to get rid of, you know, not big piles, but if you want to get rid of it, please contact the borough to get on a list on one of these days to get your rims removed. A couple completed items by the Public Works in the last few weeks. There was some tree work done in Garcia Park. Some residents became concerned with trees overhanging into their property with the trees being in Garcia Park, so that was completed. Two trees were taken care of. The Tree Company is also going to inspect trees in all parks supposedly this week to make sure if there's any other trees that are of any concern. And they've also installed updated cameras in all parks. They've been serviced and upgraded as needed. Next, with trash and recycling, here we go. No recycle pickup Wednesday, May 28. That's the Wednesday following Monday, Memorial Day. So it's in the calendar, there will be no recycle pickup. Regular trash will be picked up. And the next electronic recycle and paper shredding event has been scheduled for November 15. So keep that date circled on your calendar. I know it's down the road, but we had it last month, and we got over 200 cars coming with their recycling to get done, so.
Is it still a cobra?
It's going to be still a cobra. That's what we're going to, yeah. Okay, so that's my report for this evening. Have a good evening.
Mr. Leslie, sir. Mr. Leslie, I do apologize, I forgot to put you on email. If you would like to stick around, we would certainly need you. Good evening.
Good evening, council and residents. Just a couple things here. Is that communications meeting still going on that we had a month or so ago? Remember, we had communications?
We're not going to do another one probably until June.
Okay. I'm just curious if I could sit on that also.
Absolutely.
Just a couple things here. Still scuttlebutt about 5042 Edgemata Avenue to Super Beverage, turning into like a place center. I don't know if they came to zoning or anything yet, their variances.
Wait a minute, what?
They want to turn it into like a Betty's Fun Spot over there at the Super Beverage. 5042 Edgemata Avenue, the Super Beverage, they probably want to go away, and they want to make like a, still scuttlebutt, though. Just letting everybody know, you guys probably don't even know about it. See that?
No, you're always the one that gets the businesses. They're closing down.
It's still in the works. I guess they got to come to zoning and variances and everything else, but that's just the word on the curb.
That's where you're going to get your schlitz.
Did they talk to the...
I don't know that. I'm just asking if anybody heard about it.
Okay.
I'll find out tomorrow.
532 West Perk Haven Road to Stone Hill. Working diligently down there with Charles, Steve, and the PFSO officers on getting Knox boxes on all the buildings now. They wanted a copy of the ordinance. I gave them the copy of the ordinance, which is 143901, rapid entry. So hopefully, we get Knox boxes on all those buildings along with the police. God forbid, hopefully, there's never a domestic. They also had a key to Knox box to get in and do whatever they have to do. But rapid entry system, Stone Hill, we're getting, trying to get Knox boxes on all the buildings. Right now, there's only one down there. It's on the rear J Building. We wanted to just bring that up to code. So diligently working on that with those people down there. The Brookhaven Shop and Center, I'm working with Sean in the rear there. They got all the dumpsters in our fire lane to get the fire trucks through. They put all the dumpsters up against the fence. Now it impedes the fire trucks get to the rear. So Sean sent Avi a letter, trying to get them moved back up against 15 feet off the back of the building, the way the code is written. But right now, they're in the fire lanes in the rear of that shopping center. Pep Boys did a sprinkler split over there, so now Ross and Pep Boys are two different systems. The new radios for the fire marshals in, thank you for all the emails and everything that went back and forth to get the fire company reimbursed. The OLC fire alarm system update. Now, they're going to be notified, since we've got the, John's got, working on that, getting that fire alarm company. So they will notify John every year, or myself. That's why he has to give me the guy's name and number, so I can contact him. Every year, this date, they're going to come back and do those fire alarms and fire extinguishers, just like when they signed Franklin signs with somebody and Pendalko and the rest of the shopping centers. That contractor knows on May 5, next year, we got to go do those things. So whenever they get situated over there, they'll have somebody come do the sprinklers and the fire alarm and the fire extinguishers. They'll get a contract with somebody, just like the borough is going to do with Our Lady of Charity. So that'll alleviate all that dumb crap that's going on over there. Okay? By far, Franklin Reorder was probably the worst contractor that ever come to the borough. Just throwing that out there. On all these buildings that were built, they were a pain in the neck.
It's okay to say things, it's okay to say things we can't.
Okay? So that's where we're at with that. Just like on the restaurants, twice a year, they have to have their hoods cleaned. Every six months, somebody comes in and cleans their hoods. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what is going on with Metta Espresso being bought, correct?
Yes.
Same type of business. Who said, okay. How long?
I talked to Morgan. That should only be like a two-week turnaround.
Okay, good. All right. I forgot one thing. The Akabuchi family who donated the seven and a half, seven and a half acres of land along Ridley Creek, they, and this was sort of a request when they, they were talking about donating the land. They're suggesting naming the land First Responders Park, donated by Frank and Anthony Akabuchi. Forgive me for not knowing who Frank and Anthony are. I think Frank might be the dad and Anthony might be the uncle. And the sign would be clearly labeled in appreciation of police, fire, and medical first responders in the community. And that is perfectly timed. So it could be a park, or it could be a wildlife sanctuary.
We'll put a plaque up, we finally made it.
Yeah, and they offered to pay for the actual construction of the sign as well. I don't, I don't think that, go ahead.
Casey Signs, they do a great job.
Oh, thank you.
If the builder who donated to them Akabuchis will be paying for the signage, yeah, I suggest we look at Casey Signs.
Thanks for jumping in with that commercial, but that's okay. I shall keep that in mind, but that's perfectly timed, and that's a nice name. We just have to decide whether we want it to be a park or a wildlife sanctuary.
We still have time to think about it.
Yes, we could consider that between now and, say, August.
So I do have something from the project manager. She states, not a fun center, but someone is interested in taking over the lease for a sports training center. Nothing has gone to the LL for review or anything like that. So who am I directing, whoever this person is interested in?
Zoning, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see why, I don't see why they wouldn't pass zoning.
Okay.
They have to make an application.
They're selling beer everywhere in the borough. I mean, you're losing a beer distributor. What's the harm, what's the harm in putting that type of building there? It supports that type of business. It's similarly structured to Betty's if you go inside. Or not Betty's, what's that?
You clearly haven't been in the back there.
What are you talking about?
Okay.
I go to Chili's.
Pitching clinic, like a warehouse environment. Getting a pitching clinic.
Sherry.
Yes, sir.
The process.
The old movie theater.
Mind your own habits.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, sir.
The old movie theater. The process would be initiated by the applicant filing the zoning application with zoning officer William Gavin.
Okay.
Oh, gee. That'll be the second public discussion session if there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion.
I was called out.
Good lord, I thought we were getting out of here.
I was called out.
We're going to be here till 11 o'clock.
I'm going to leave as fast as no comments from you all, make it fast. Thank you to lots and lots of people for the stuffing the Easter eggs, the fire company, Town Watch. We had ladies, we had people from, pickleball came over, volleyball came, artful aging came. It was amazing. We had over 50 some people stuffing Easter eggs. And we got it done, we got over 8,000 eggs done in about an hour and a half, which was amazing. Thank you very much. Moving on to Easter, which we had to postpone the Easter egg hunt, but we did that, we had a great time. The kids had a great time. We gave out 330 tickets to people who were there. I think we got most of them came, even though the tape was changed. And a very nice thing, it's going to help us out in the long run, is we've probably got about 90% of the eggs back. So we can, so they were all recycled, so it's amazing. So we've got that safe, so we can save some money that way. Then we had, we had the dance, as Sherry said.
Cleanup?
Well, get there. Dance was first. We had about 55, 50, 55 students there, great time. They actually were really, really well behaved. Made life nice and easy for everybody. Then we did, my brain's going dead. We did all sorts of other fun stuff. The biggest thing was this past Saturday, we had our, we had to postpone our Earth Day because of rain on Earth Day Saturday, but we did this Saturday. We had 17 people who came over to pick up trash at Our Lady of Charity property. We went through the woods. Trust me, went through the woods, right? Dan has the poison ivy, a few other people, so we had lots of fun with that. They picked up, they filled the beds of two different dump trucks. So it's really good. There's more stuff over there that needs to be attached, the public work needs to get to. There was a sofa still there. There is a set of tires in there. We had to take down an encampment that was in there. We're not sure how and who put that there, but it was fun.
It's more like a speakeasy, yeah.
A speakey was in there. The best part with all those 17 people that were there, we had three little six-year-old Girl Scout daisies that were there. And they were adorable, they had fun. They were walking through. Mrs. Heller said they wouldn't go into the woods, but she took the wood and all the stuff out to them, and they put it all in the trash bags and did a lot of fun stuff. So it was really good that way. So our next big thing is this Saturday is the Concert in the Park. Echoes of the British Invasion, really, really good. Bring all the moms out, all the grandmoms out, bring hubby along, bring the kids, the grandkids, the park is there. It's, we've got a great park set up for doing concerts in the park. The concert going, the playground's going, snack bars there. You can go to Rita's if you want water ice.
Oh, it's really nice.
It's all sorts of fun stuff. And so that's where we're at right now, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Cory Booker. We have one more for public discussion. We're never going to sleep. Dan, you're in trouble.
Hi, my name is Jenny McKay. I'm on Mount Vernon Avenue. So I, just so you know, that I watched, I was here for half of the April meeting, and then I watched the second half. And I have a question. Who is in charge of swearing in our chief? Who, who, who's the person that swears in our chief?
Swearing in.
Same here. I thought it was our mayor. I need to ask you, Dan, what were you doing? You were doing like a re-swearing in with him on that, on our last council meeting. Where was it coming from? To me, it came across as bullying our chief, who's been in our chief swearing in for like three weeks.
Well, I'm sorry that you took it that way. I was asking him those questions because I wanted to know. A lot of people had asked me the same thing, and I was just asking him to make a public commitment, which he very well did.
Exactly, absolutely, but he makes a public commitment in a swearing in. It just came across. And I do talk to neighbors who come up and say things. So people did take it that way, that it was a level of bullying. I think you need to, you know, people there need to be cautious about when they go out and say something like that.
Okay, well, my apologies if it came off that way. It was not meant that way. All right, thank you, Booth. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Does anyone have any specific questions about Crozier? We will, I can't put a timeline on when we'll have a deal in place. Our experts are going to be with us after this meeting. Again, we will not rush like some townships or municipalities, I should say, did and cost our taxpayers an absolute fortune. And we're going to look for quality, and we're going to look for, obviously, it's quality first, cost second, but we think we can, we can cover both and deliver the best lifesaving paramedic service for whomever we partner with, so. And I want to say one thing, I've been laid off a couple times. I work in mortgage lending, and I know most of the Crozier folks will be, will be all right. But there's a lot of people in Brookhaven right here that were impacted. And, you know, these are, these are high-paying jobs, they have pensions, they have, they have all the union benefits, a lot of them. Riddle or Main Line is going to hire some of them. I'm sure that Christian is stepping in and hiring some of them, but they, they were left without, without a severance package. Without a severance package, without medical coverage. Lifesaving people were left without one damn dime by these bastards called Prospect Holdings. Can you imagine? Can you imagine, from Texas?
Yeah.
3,000 people, it's not just 3,000 people. You got to understand, each of the 3,000 folks, that might affect, each one of them might affect two or three kids and their families and their extended families, and how much money they spend in the businesses around Crozier. Upland Diner, there's a little pizza place. This is, this is disgusting that you would let a nonprofit or a for-profit in like this to come in and just rape one of the most important hospitals, arguably the most important hospital in a county such as this. I mean, I would feel safer in Haiti right now than I do in Delaware County as far as getting transported to a hospital. Keep them all in mind, most of them will be okay. They'll, they'll get, they'll get jobs. There is a nursing shortage, but we'll take care of what we can. And I think this council's goal should be reaching out to our partners with other local governments, the townships, the smaller boroughs, and pressuring the higher-level politicians to flip and do something about this. And pressure someone to buy that hospital system and get us back to where we need to be, and maybe we'll be in better shape. But keep them in mind, we have your backs, and we have some of the finest EMS folks that you could ask for. That's the expertise that we're relying on, and as well as those in neighboring municipalities. And again, I want to give a big kudos to all of our colleagues that are on the neighboring local governments that have really come together to, with the lives of their constituents ahead of everything. So kudos to you, we'll get through it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.